Good evening and welcome in to the 2024 Town Hall Debate, held here in the beautiful Crown Jewel of the Carson Valley in Douglas County at the Community and Senior Center. We have a full house here tonight in the Community and Senior Center dining room, and then, of course, we'd love to welcome our viewers at home. We're so happy that you're joining us. I'm Renee Louie, your host this evening with the Business Council of Douglas County. We'd like to welcome everyone here, and we are so happy that you all are committed to democracy and to understanding the people running for office and exactly who you're going to spend your vote on. It's an important decision, each and every box that you check each and every time. We have a wonderful group of moderators this evening that I'd like to introduce. We have the Honorable District Court Judge Gregory. We have prior state assemblyman, prior state senator, and minority leader, among 100 other titles, if not 1,000, and current Nevada Director of Conservation and Natural Resources, James Settlemire. Welcome, James. We also have Bryce Klutz. He is a CEO and President of Metcalf. He's a native Nevadan, a Business Council member, a businessman in the community, and he serves on many committees, including the Planning Commission. Thank you for your service as well, Bryce Klutz. Bobby Thompson is usually one of our moderators. She does send her very best. She was called away on a work emergency and sends her love to all of you and thanks you for being here as well. She's an immediate past president of the Business Council, and she has served for many years on the Business Council, as well as the Chamber, and many other groups. This evening, we are proud to celebrate the 22nd annual anniversary of the Town Hall Debate. We began at the CVIC Hall in Minden all those years ago, in 2002. I was only two then, right? Yeah, they believe that, yes. We were a full house then, and we're a full house now. We moved the debate to the Crown Jewel of the Carson Valley, the Douglas County Community and Senior Center, and we have continued to make this beautiful venue our headquarters to gather as a community for many things, including the debate. And we're so happy to be here, and we thank the county staff that worked so hard to keep this building amazing every day for events like this. Our debates simply show how dedicated our voters are. There is a full house here for the viewers at home. They care, as much as you care, about your vote. I need to let you know that the debate will be, in addition to being broadcasted live, it will also be available in a few days online, and The Record Courier will publish the link, and it will be on the website of the Chamber, the Business Council, and The Record Courier, so you can play it again, and again, and again, if you wish. I will tell you that, in our last debate, we had over 17,000 viewers, in addition to the people in this full-capacity room. We also had over 60,000 replays of that debate before the polls opened, and then people continued throughout the polling time to watch the videos. So, the candidates tonight have worked extremely hard to prepare so you can get to know them. I want you to be extremely respectful and extremely kind to them. They volunteered to do this. They volunteered to serve, and they've worked hard to prepare. We also have many elected officials in the audience today. I would like to acknowledge the elected officials. Mark Gardner, County Commissioner. Danny Tarkanian, County Commissioner. Danny, where are you? There you go, Danny. Dan Coverley, Sheriff of Douglas County. Thank you, Sheriff. I remember a time when he was standing up here. Chief Todd Carlini, East Fork Fire. Chief, where are you? I understand he's not elected, but he's an important person to our community. Shawnee Garen, County Recorder. Amy Bergens, Clerk-Treasurer. Where's Amy? There's Amy. We have Carol DeCarlo, Board of Regents. Carol, thank you, Carol, for coming all this way. Doug Engelkirk, School Board Trustee. Yvonne Staff, School Board Trustee. David Burns, David, School Board Trustee. There you go. Barbara Smallwood, Minden. And that's the MGSD, Minden Sanitation District. And Jim McAllop, Gardenville Rancho's GID, Chairman and Trustee. Mr. McAllop, there you go. We are extremely lucky to be in such a community that we all stick together, and we all work together to make things better, and all those people I just mentioned are the heart and soul of that group. Would you agree? Yes. Thank you for the work that you do as an elected official. We understand that it continues to be an unprecedented time in our lives and in our community. There always seems to be anxiety and disruption, a recession, a tough economy, and more. Many agencies and organizations, including local government, the Chambers, the Business Council, nonprofit and volunteers, employers, business owners, and you, are all sticking together. I want you to continue to stick together. Do I have your word? That includes you at home as well. We must stick together. Now, more than ever, you are seeking leadership, guidance, and answers to very tough questions. We understand. In the 22 years that I've been lucky enough to be your moderator of this debate, we have always promised a good and informational evening. We've always promised fair and balanced evening. We appreciate all of you and all the work that these moderators and these candidates are going to do. Please give them a round of applause. I do want to say, please keep in mind that the views of the sponsors, being The Record Courier, the Business Council, the Tahoe Chamber, the Carson Valley Chamber, and Brian Copa Photography, their views are their own. Does that make sense? They are all longtime partners and agency partners with us. We have all been around a very long time. We appreciate the diversity in each and every organization that we partner with. They are all sister agencies to the Business Council. They are the hub to the community. They are the hub to the businesses. We appreciate all of you very much. Kurt, I think I introduced you earlier, but now I see you in person, Kurt Holdbrand of The Record Courier. All of the candidates were invited, that you will see on your ballot. Some have withdrawn since then, and some simply had other obligations they had booked, such as international travel, that they couldn't change before the debate was announced a few months ago. That does not mean that they don't want to be here, or that they are not interested in your vote. Please continue to get to know them as well, although they could not make it tonight. Generally, we always have near 100% participation, so I do want to thank them for their running for office as well, and their willingness to serve in any of those positions. We have organized the debate over the last several months, not days, months. The format is, the debate is the same as it has been for years and years, and we have a very nice evening planned for you. We are going to first hear the Douglas County School Board candidates, and then we are going to then take a brief break, and for the viewers at home, you will have a pause on your screen and a graphic, and then we'll come back live. So, get your popcorn, refresh your sodas, and come back and watch the second half, which will be the County Commission candidates. The moderators will explain the format of the debate. All of the candidates have been thoroughly informed. We've visited with them all. They have all the rules. They know what to expect, and they are ready. Are you guys ready? Yes, all right. So, without any further delay, I would like to welcome up the candidates for school district that are on the ballot, and I would ask the moderators to take their places, and I will hand it over. Thank you again so much. Remember, we are family.
If everyone will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. We are pleased that you will be participating in the long-standing Town Hall Debate series.
Thank you. Though I would never be able to fill the shoes of Bobby Thompson, who was pulled away by work at the last minute, I will definitely do my best. I'm honored to be here today and to moderate a very important debate with the candidates vying to represent the best school district in the state of Nevada. I am a father of four children. My oldest daughter graduated from Douglas High School and the University of Nevada Reno with a bachelor's degree in education. My oldest son graduated from Douglas High School and the University of Nevada Reno with a bachelor's degree in finance, two minors, and honors degree, and an MBA. My youngest son graduated from Douglas High School, is part of the Jump Start Program, and received an Associate of Arts degree from Western Nevada College a couple weeks prior to receiving his diploma from Douglas High School. He is currently a 20-year-old student at the University of Nevada Reno, where he will graduate with a bachelor's degree in both finance and economics, as well as an honors degree this fall. My youngest daughter is currently a fourth grader at Scarselli Elementary, so I got it covered. Spread them out a bit. I share this, not to boast, but because my wife, Tanya, and I not only love this community, but we also love that our children received an amazing education in Douglas County by the best educators, counselors, coaches, and school administrators, and my kids still do today. Today, I'm not just a moderator, but a father. Today, I'm not just a moderator, but a father and a voter. I look forward to hearing your thoughtful ideas and educating both me and the public on keeping this school district great. I want to thank each of you here today for your willingness and desire to represent the Douglas County School District as a board member. The importance of that responsibility should not be taken lightly. As I look into the crowd, I see parents, teachers, administrators, concerned citizens, who are very much looking forward to hearing from you today. I assume that you're running for this board because you care about the future of our children and this community. I encourage you to share that passion, but to do so in a respectful way. With that said, I say we get to it. Like to lay down a few ground rules that I ask you to follow. I ask that you please do not talk over each other and beyond your allotted time. I will give you a warning, or Mr. Settlemire will, and then after that, we will not ask you any more questions. Of course, neither of us want to do that, as you are simply here, as you are here, not simply, so the voters can hear from you. So I simply ask that you follow the rules and have decorum in this debate. To the audience, as Ms. Louie said, I also politely ask that you do not heckle, cheer, boo, clap, or interrupt. We have a limited amount of time to get through this very important debate, and we need your cooperation. If you have a question or comment to direct to a candidate, they will be available, if you have a question or comment to direct to a candidate and it's not able to be read today, they'll be available afterwards. Please reserve your thoughts for then. The format for the evening is going to be as follows. Each candidate will be introduced and offer their opening remarks in the order in which you drew, in the order in which you drew your number. This order was chosen by a card draw that was done prior to this. The Time Keeper, Randy Thompson, will keep you track with your, keep you on track with your time. A yellow card is a warning that indicates you have 30 seconds. A red card means that your time is up. Again, we ask that you honor your time and do not speak past the red card. After each candidate has given their opening remarks, we will move into the debate round. The questions are drawn up by the Chambers, Business Council, submissions from the public, and the moderators in a collective effort. Remember, neither of us wrote them, so we're just reading them. In the debate round, there's going to be a possible pool of eight to 10 questions on various topics that we can draw from for each race. Each candidate will be asked a question in a round-robin format. Each of you will have one minute to respond. Opponents may request to rebut a response and debate it further. If either of us grant that request, you will be given 30 seconds. We may choose to deny the request, at which point, we will follow up with the next question following the round-robin format. After we get through with that round, we will move to the audience round. In that round, we will take questions from the audience and community. We have already received a large number of questions from the community via email before this meeting, which reflects just how important this race is to our community. Unfortunately, we're not able to ask every question that is received due to the time constraints, so we had to limit the number of questions. The questions will be screened for any offensive, repeat, or irrelevant material, and then they will be provided to Mr. Settlemire and I, and we will ask them. For those in attendance this evening, we have pens and cards available, as we discussed earlier, for you to write down your questions and to specify the candidate for which you want it to be asked. We will then read the question to the candidate, and that candidate can respond, as well as the candidate's opponent. The final round will be for closing remarks, where each of you will be given a minute and a half to give your closing remarks. There will be no rebuttals or debating in this final round. The order that was chosen at the beginning will now be reversed. So we are going to begin with the candidate opening remarks. Each candidate will be given the allotted time to give your opening statement. Please keep contact with Ms. Thompson, as she will be throwing up the cards denoting the designated times. Again, we ask that you respect the time given. So with that, so in the random fashion, the first person to kick this off is Mr. Engelkirk.
Thank you. My name is Doug Engelkirk, and I'm running for my second term as School Board Trustee. The reason I ran the first time was my concern for the direction I saw our schools going across the nation. Away from teaching basics, away from teaching students how to think for themselves, instead moving towards indoctrination and groupthink. My first term has been very challenging and difficult, but my reasons for running remain the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engelkirk. Ms. Miller.
Good afternoon. My name is Erin Miller. I am an involved parent. I live up at the lake. I'm running for District 3. I have a ninth grader, I have a seventh grader, and I have a fourth grader. I'm involved in Parents Club, I'm involved in Boosters, and I'm also involved down here in Pop Warner. What I want is our kids to go from survive to thrive. I believe all of our kids deserve a good education, and I believe Douglas County can do that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Wagstaff.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Wagstaff. I am currently a appointed School Board Trustee, and I am running because I have six kids, three of which have graduated from Douglas County. I have a senior who graduated on Monday from WNC. I have a sophomore, and I have a sixth grader. And I, my husband and I are conservative, and we live in this valley, and we care about what is happening here, and we want to see our children thrive.
Thank you, Ms. Wagstaff. Ms. Nighting.
Thank you. My name is Melinda Nighting, and I am running for District 5 School Board. Just by way of introduction, I am originally from southeast Idaho. I come from a small potato farm. I've moved to the valley shortly after graduating from college with my husband. I am the mother of four children. We've lived here for 24 years. All of them have attended Douglas County School Districts, and I have two daughters still in the district. I have a senior and an eighth grader, and they just finished their track season. I am running to, number one, restore fiscal responsibility; number two, to promote civil discourse; and number three is to return the focus to our students, our families, and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagstaff. Mr. Zinke.
Thank you. Good evening. That sounds awful. My name is Marcus Zinke, and I'm running unopposed for School Board Trustee for District 4. I was born and raised in Gardenville, and I still live here with my beautiful wife, Jeanette, of 20 years, and my two daughters, Gianna and Lily, both of whom attend Douglas County schools. I played golf at the University of Nevada Reno, where I earned a double major in finance and economics. Upon graduating, I returned to the Carson Valley, where I've owned and operated several family businesses for the last 20 years. I've coached a myriad of youth sports, as well as the boys and girls' golf teams at Douglas High School, where we've won multiple state titles. It's safe to say that I care deeply for Douglas County schools. A minute and a half and being considered the opposition are what have compelled me to run for this position. No one that I'm aware of can get their point across in a minute and a half, and parents should never be called the opposition, but rather should be considered part of the solution. Not that long ago, people were allowed to have differing opinions. Having one did not constitute, oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zinke. Okay, thank you very much for those introductions. We will now move into the questions, and we look forward to your responses. The first question, the first question is as follows, and we'll start with Ms. Miller. Why are you running for School Board? If elected, what are your top priorities?
Being a part of the Lake community is very rewarding, and our kids in this small community should have the opportunity to make sure their school needs are met. I'm passionate about seeing the schools thrive, and as we started some amazing extracurricular programs back in 2019, and we're working to bring those back. This is what motivated me to become a School Board Trustee candidate. Again, I want all of our kids to move from survive to thrive. I want all of our kids to be able to include themselves in extracurricular activities and get a great education. I've helped coach cheer down here in the valley. I've also watched my kids do track and cheer up at the lake, along with a golf program that we've helped implement, along with a tennis program, and I believe all of our kids should be able to do those things. And as School Board Trustee, I would like to see that for all of our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Zinke.
Could you repeat the question, please? Sorry?
Yes, sir. Why are you running for School Board? If elected, what are your top three priorities?
So, I'm running for School Board because I think the direction of the School Board starting a few years ago was not necessarily in line with what is best for the kids. At one point, a standard-based grading system was implemented, and I opposed that deeply. I even spent money on an advertisement in the paper to voice my concerns. Back then, I felt like my voice was heard, and I think that garnering support from other people, that compelled me to continue this journey now. Moving forward, I want to see something with this school district that benefits the kids for the sake of the kids, and a relationship with the parents. Students first, then parents. I think we're trying a top-down approach, where the superintendent is ousted, and the HR director is ousted, and the transportation director is out, and I'm not sure how any of that benefits the kids. So I have a distinct...
Time's up, Mr. Zinke.
Thank you.
Ms. Wagstaff.
Thank you. I am running for School Board because I care about my kids and their education. I care about your kids and your grandkids' education. Every student is important, no matter what walk of life they choose, no matter where they come from. If they are here in Douglas County, we as a community need to care about them.
Thank you. Mr. Engelkirk.
I am running because I am concerned about, again, as I said in my open statement, where we're going as a nation in educating our children, particularly here in Douglas County. I would like to see our kids be free to learn proper history. I'm not saying in this district it's not being taught. What I'm concerned about is what I see coming across our nation, and I would like to see our kids learn really an amazing part about this country, and not what I'm hearing so much about where we're dissing basically America. This is an amazing nation, and I think our students should learn that, and I think they should know that. I think we should be basing our education on merit. We shouldn't be catering to a lowest denominator, but we should allow our kids to thrive.
Thank you, Mr. Engelkirk. Mr. Settlemire.
Thank you. Remember, everybody, we have four different distinct districts that are going to be running currently for School Board. Or, we have one more question, I think, the person had to answer, correct, Ms. Nighting?
Did you want?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. Ms. Nighting.
Thank you. So I am running for School Board. It comes down to my kids, and I don't know about you, but you can do some pretty crazy things when your kids are involved, and I care deeply about my kids and about all the kids in Douglas County. I've spent a lot of time with them. Since 2005, when my oldest started kindergarten, I think I've walked to the school every day to drop kids off, to pick kids up, and I've coached, I've helped with the band. I care deeply about our kids, our whole community. The thing that I am really concerned about is finances. I am a fiscal conservative to the core, and maybe you can't be anything but that coming from a small farm, but our legal bills have gotten completely out of control. They're over 200% what they used to be, and with our declining enrollment, we can't afford that. We have to have that money for our kids, for our teachers, and our classrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Nighting. I apologize for that.
With that, we're going to move on to question number two. A little bit of background, I graduated from Douglas High. My father did, my grandfather did. In that respect, my grandfather was born and taught too. He was one of three people that graduated Douglas High that year as a senior. I asked him how it was. He said it was terrible. He had to take an underclassman to prom, because there was only three. That being said, I would like to ask a question, and we'll go ahead and start off with Mr. Engelkirk and rotate through. What are the three biggest challenges facing Douglas County's public education system right now?
The three biggest, I would say, one of them is our dwindling enrollment due to basically high costs, particularly up at the lake, for families to be able to live there, and so being able to adjust to losing basically funds every year. We lose enrollment, we lose money for our kids. That's a big deal for us. Being representing the Lake District is particularly acute up there with how we can keep George Whitel High School and Zephyr Cove Elementary School functioning. That's another big priority for me. And another priority this term would be just having some sort of cordiality on our board and being able to work together and get stuff done for the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Engelkirk. We'll now move to Ms. Miller. That being said, though, remember, as you're a candidate up there, try to speak closer to the microphone so that it gets louder, but not to the point that you get feedback. So, just so you know, for people in the back row. Ms. Miller, if you could please answer the same question.
Absolutely. So I think the three biggest challenges for DCSD, I agree with Doug, you know, increasing enrollment, finding opportunities for maybe surrounding counties to do variances, maybe doing different ideas and doing CTEs. You know, we're trying to find career tech education, opportunities to invite families maybe that can't live up at the lake, but maybe that live in surrounding counties, or that live in surrounding, from the valley as well, and asking them to come to our community. I think being fiscally responsible is also part of a huge challenge right now. I think we need to figure out with a declining enrollment, you have a declining budget, so you can't pay teachers what they deserve if we don't have the funds available. And I think the third thing is extracurricular, is just really making sure that our kids understand that they are student-first, but an athlete is important as well. You have to have a full-rounded well-being, mental healthness, along with physical healthness, wellness.
Thank you. Ms. Wagstaff, same question.
Three important things that I think are facing our students is they need to be heard. I think that we, as a community, are raising some absolutely amazing students, and I think that we need to listen to them and what they want and what they see are problems. I think declining enrollment is a huge one, which has already been discussed, and I think as a School Board, we need to work together to move forward, to make things better for our students, because they, they are the reason that we are here.
Thank you. Ms. Nighting?
Well, the number one that I mentioned before really is the financial, and with, with Carson Valley, it's beautiful, but it's expensive to live in, and young families, many of them can't afford to live here, and so we get our funding based on per student, and with the declining enrollment, we're going to be getting less money. So we need to be really careful, especially when we're dealing with taxpayer money, that we are using it the way it was supposed to be used. Another one is, we need to bring civility back to our board meetings. We need to focus on the kids...
We need to focus on the kids and their needs, the teachers supporting them. We can disagree on things but we don't have to be disagreeable. It's okay to talk, it's okay to have differing opinions. But we really need to come together and address the things that our kids need, address what's going on. Our kids, many of them are struggling with mental health, many of them are struggling with addictions. The vaping problem in the high school is coming into the middle school. We have to do things, things.
Thank you. Mr. Zinke, same question?
So, the students' needs and interests should be the focal point of all of our decisions. Providing them with a safe and healthy learning environment that breaks through barriers to their success is paramount. Engaging parents in their educational strengths and the partnership between home and school, regular communication, a dialogue between teachers and parents, and involvement in school activities, all of which allow parents to stay informed and to contribute to their child's overall success. And then lastly, I would say again, the decorum of the board. You know, it wasn't that long ago that people were allowed to have differing opinions. Having one did not constitute hatred for one another but rather it opened a dialogue to find common ground. In our current climate, it seems a difference of opinion is a call for conflict rather than an opportunity for understanding. Dissenting views are met with hostility rather than curiosity and I plan to change that. We will not always agree, I will not always please everyone but I will listen and your voice will be an integral part of the decision-making process.
Thank you. Mr. Klutz?
Thank you, Mr. Settlemeyer. We'll move on to question number three and we'll start with Ms. Miller. How will you work in a collaborative way to address your goals?
So, working in a collaborative way is listening to not only your other trustees but listening to your constituents and trying to find some type of middle ground. I think we need to work more on just being good people and bringing forth positivity. And when you bring forth positivity, you can come to a complete goal by doing that. When we don't work together, we have discourse and that doesn't help. But being collaborative doesn't mean that we have to have the same point of view and the same ideology. It just means we have to have the same goal. And I think that by bringing people together and being...understanding of different backgrounds, you can work together even having different point of views.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Wagstaff?
I would love to see a student sitting on our school board. I would love to see a larger CTE program. I think that we need to arm our kids with what they need when they leave our wonderful little valley and they go in and out into that big crazy world that they're prepared for whatever life throws at them. And we have to do that starting at school, starting in preschool, starting in kindergarten and through middle school all the way up. We have to work together and as a board, we need to come together so that we can put our kids first.
Thank you, Ms. Wagstaff. Ms. Nighting?
I think one of the keys is seeking to understand. You need to listen. Listen, differences of opinion aren't threatening. It's what makes a democracy. And in listening, you can find that you do have common ground. I would say all the school board candidates are running because they want to make a difference for kids. And if that...well, let's work there. But I think it's really seeking to understand. And I think also letting the kids have a voice. These are amazing kids and they have amazing ideas. And I know as a mother, I learn a ton from my kids. And I think being able to say, "I don't know everything," but we are surrounded in a community with amazing people. We have people that have been administrators, teachers for years and years and years. We need to listen to them. We need to benefit from their experience.
Thank you, Ms. Nighting. Mr. Zinke?
Yeah, so, day one, I plan on having a survey, an anonymous survey at the schools for teachers, administration and staff regarding what their sentiment is and what their feelings are on how things are run, both with any kind of teaching that they're expected to do. The epic program, which I know has been mentioned in meetings past regarding its legitimacy and/or lack thereof. And so, I feel like if we can get through to the teachers and find what their real sentiments are without attaching a name to it for fear of recourse, we can get to the bottom of how to get through to these kids, some of them easier than others but all of them mattering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zinke. Mr. Engelkirk?
I've been on the board for four years. The first two years were fairly incontentious. The last two have been very contentious and I found myself in the unenvied position of being the swing vote. And so, I've worked my best to try and hear both sides and to act accordingly. And I think if, basically, if you look back at previous meetings, you'll see how I've tried to do that and I'll continue to try and do that in the future.
Well, we'll start this question off with Ms. Wagstaff. It's an interesting question. My father, he was actually on the school board for sixteen years, chairman for twelve. It was always interesting to see how he reached out to the community, did different events. So, the question is, how will you help ensure transparent communication between the board and the community?
So, when I was appointed to the school board, I made it my very own personal goal to reply to every single email that is sent to me so that every parent, teacher, staff member, community member feels heard so that they know that I've read their email, they know that I care about what they say. Whether I agree with it or not, that doesn't matter. It matters that they hear, they feel heard.
Thank you. Ms. Nighting, same question?
I would say the same thing. I will listen. I think that is one of my strong points. I want, I want you to email me, I want you to call, I want to talk to you, I want to hear what you have to say. I want to know the concerns and I think that's really important, that everyone feels like their voice has been heard. Also, as far as transparency, I think it's very important that we follow the rules, that we know the rules. And I will commit to knowing the rules and what we are supposed to be doing. But please, if there's ever a time that you would want to contact me with concerns, I am here to listen because I am here to serve this community.
Thank you. Mr. Zinke, same question?
I think the important thing is that the board follow the agenda and follow the proper rules in planning the agenda. I've been to almost all of the board meetings for the last several years and when one half of the board doesn't know what the other half of the board is doing, whether that's done erroneously or nefariously, that's not transparent. And so, I think if we can show the people, the parents, the stakeholders, the students, that we are listening to what is being asked of us and we're planning agendas and trying to accomplish things in accordance to what they're telling us, we can't fail. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Engelkirk, same question?
Okay, for transparency, I would just have to say that I do my best to be honest and speak my mind at the meetings. I do read, I get a lot of emails and I read as many as I can but I run a construction company and I manage three other businesses. So, I cannot respond to everything. When I have time, I do respond and I try to respond in a cordial way and let people know what I'm thinking, so.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, same question?
So, I think the biggest thing is definitely responding back to our constituents, responding back to our parents and making the time to do that. Being, you know, running for the school board, we are being elected by those people and we need to then follow back up with them. We need to make that time to follow back up with them, to follow up with their concerns, follow up their questions. However, if there is issues that are directly related to a school, we also need to make sure that our constituents and our parents understand the direct line of communication for that. But that we're also here for them to help them understand, you know, maybe what happened with an agenda item or what happened at a school board meeting and things like that. Just try to be as vocal and explain our situation best as possible. But I think at the end of the day, it's making the time to respond back to all of those constituents and parents with those questions that they have.
Thank you. For question number five, we'll now go to Mr. Klutz.
This question is going to be for Ms. Nighting. This is a topic that is very dear, near and dear to my heart. I've spent the majority of my career and will spend the rest of my life in working to build the next workforce and to train our workforce and whether that's in mechanics or shop or construction or robotics or whatever the case may be. This is something that's incredibly passionate to me, that I'm incredibly passionate about. So, the question is, we know that students who participate in CTE graduate at a high rate with useful skills. How will you integrate CTE from a pre-K to graduation?
One of the important things, I think, is letting the kids see the real-life application of what they're doing, even in elementary school. I went out and I visited Minden Elementary School and they were working on planting seeds. And then they went to a farmer's market and sold those seeds. But it's one thing to just talk about seeds growing and then it's another thing to take the seed, grow it and then take it and sell it. It teaches you, the things you're learning, they're applicable in your life. And so, I think I would love to see more of that even at the elementary level, that when you're teaching these kids about things, give them the opportunity to see the real life, how this can benefit them. And I think we have great programs in the high school with our welding, with our shop, with our culinary. I think it's just a great opportunity and it should start in elementary, always a practical application.
Thank you, Ms. Nighting. Same question for you, Mr. Zinke?
Yeah, I'm going to echo a lot of what Ms. Nighting said. The importance of everyday jobs should be exactly that, important. And I don't think we teach kids enough that those jobs are also needed. We had this motion years ago that college is the only way to go and that's just not the case. And I think for some kids, that's not even remotely possible but they can still make a beautiful living in the real world. And so, teaching them why something is applicable and why it's important is an integral part of that. I get asked all the time from my little one, "When am I ever going to use this?" And I try my dearest to give her an example of the real-world applicability of something. And sometimes it's very applicable and sometimes I've got to do some digging. But that's certainly an important way and if we start that when they're young and work that through as even maybe a part of some standards, that'd be the best way to implement that.
Thank you, Mr. Zinke. Mr. Engelkirk?
Being in construction, I'm very, very supportive of CTE. And I've been working with Principal Ryan up at the lake and with the fire chief, Scott Lindgren, about bringing in different programs that we can do up at Wattel High, all for the purpose of hopefully increasing enrollment up at the school there. So, I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you, Ms. Miller?
So, CTE programs are actually very near and dear to my heart. Being part of Parents Club, back in 2018, we built some grow domes with some outside funds. With that, we've now allowed our, we've worked with our master gardeners and they've been able now from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade, been able to have different levels of education with growing in those grow domes. For instance, this past week, the kindergartners who had planted kale earlier this week or earlier this school year, this past week, then went to the culinary program at Wattel and mailed kale, made kale chips. It's amazing to watch to be able to do that. Our fourth graders were able to harvest seeds and they grew their own seed business that they sold back to the master gardeners. And as Parents Club, we helped loan them the funds to do that so they could do something fun and learn how to then build a business in that aspect. But by working from the middle school, the elementary school to the high school culinary program across the board...
Time is up, Ms. Miller.
Sorry.
Ms. Wagstaff?
Thank you. CTE is so important for our students because they need to learn from a young age that not everyone has to go to school, that it's okay to do something different, find something that you love and pour your heart and soul into it. I have been talking with Cade Balagad at the high school and we are trying so hard to put together a task force to work on implementing more CTE programs so that our kids in elementary school and our kids in junior high get to experience and hear real-world applications for what they're learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagstaff. For those in the audience and at home, if you don't know what CT is, it's career and technical education. So, I just want to make sure that everybody understood what that was. Okay, Mr. Settlemeyer?
Thank you. I appreciate that. We're now going to the audience round. We had a couple of other prepared questions but we're starting to run a little bit short on time. So, these questions are for individuals that were asked by the audience. So, one of the questions for Mrs. Miller is, Douglas County schools have a declining enrollment. What is your five-year plan to try to manage the decline?
So, in regards to the declining enrollment, again, I think it has to do with variances from nearby counties. Offering programs that nearby counties don't. For instance, the fire, we started a fire explorer program. Two of my kids are involved in that up at the lake. I think that's something that's not being done at other schools. We're going to be working on the fire career tech for hopefully the fall with a grant. Again, my son's going to be involved in that. I'm super excited for that. But I also think about maybe the athletes, trying to increase some kind of either competition or other items that they, that other surrounding districts do not offer. By offering those, we're offering a different avenue for our students or for our student athletes and I think that will help increase the enrollment.
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Engelkirk and Ms. Miller. So, if you could be as brief but explain it as possible, I'd appreciate it. The question is, how active are you and have you been at the schools in Lake Tahoe?
Can you start?
Please.
I have not been very active. I meet with the principal occasionally. I met recently with the fire chief. And I get up there when I can but honestly, it's not very much. I work full-time and I'm pretty busy.
Ms. Miller?
I'm an involved parent. I'm at Wattel four days a week. That's their school day. I'm at Zephyr on Fridays. I help out with different activities. I'm part of Parents Club at the elementary school. I have been since 2018. Part of boosters, I have been for the past three years. They're my community. These are my kids. These are my kids' friends and my families. I also own my own business but they're important to me and so is my community and I make the time for everyone.
Appreciate that. Now, we have a question for Ms. Wagstaff. Please define DEI and explain your position on it.
That is a loaded question.
Audiences sometimes do that.
Yes, no, that, it's a good question. So, DEI is diversity, equity and inclusion. And if you Google, I know a lot of people are opposed to Google, but if you Google what it is, it, at its core, at its very basic understanding of what DEI is, diversity is important because we all come from so many different walks of life. And I think we really need to engage each other in that. Equity, I've been corrected and my understanding of equity is equity of outcome. But I believe everyone deserves a fair chance. And inclusion is everyone should be involved, everyone should be included regardless of who you are. Thank you.
This question will be for Ms. Nighting. Everyone says, I don't know about everyone, a lot of people say they support teachers. What sets you apart as far as retention, support and appreciation of teachers and staff?
I think what sets me apart is probably that I know them. I've been involved with the school since 2005. I'm there. I helped coach the Pawlou track team when they didn't have someone. I think it is that I'm there, I'm going to help be one of the judges for their literacy at CC Manili here in about a week. But I think it's a matter of being in the schools, getting to know our teachers, letting them know, "I support you. I appreciate what you do." I was really pleased that I helped, you know, donate to the teacher appreciation. I think it's a matter of just letting them know that we care, we're there, we support you. And I, from 2005, I've been willing to do whatever I can to make it successful for my kids.
Thank you.
With that, the last question from the audience is for Mr. Zinke. Clearly, you're going to win. You're running unopposed. As long as one person bothers to show up and vote for you in the general election, you are elected. So, what's going to be your number one priority to accomplish in your first year and how will you do that?
I think the number one priority in order to benefit the students would be to help bring the board together. Right now, it's very divisive. There are clearly four versus three at every meeting. Occasionally, it's four to three the other direction. But if we can't get anything together as a school board and get things done and accomplished, then we can't benefit the students. then we can't benefit the students. And I think we've seen that. I haven't seen a lot of things benefit the kids. I know to start last year, they, they started with the kids in mind, and then there were so many hot-button topics that things didn't get passed, didn't get approved, or things that did get approved came with a, a lot of contention and compassion from the audience that was in disagreement with them. So, I, I think day one, we have to figure out how to get along and how to, how to come together to, to find some common ground.
Thank you. We had a lot of questions from individuals. We have a limited time. We made sure to give each individual candidate an individual question from the audience. With that, we're to the closing remark stage of the evening, which will be in reverse order of how you gave your opening remarks. So, I believe Mr. Zinke is first.
Thank you. As a school board trustee, I will look out for the best interests of the students, parents, teachers, staff and administration, in that order. The administration that provides leadership and ensures the vision of their school community is being met will have my full support. By fostering a culture of collaboration, transparency and accountability, we can help the administrators ensure that all stakeholders are working effectively to achieve a common educational goal. We need to help the administration advocate for policies that benefit students, parents, teachers and staff alike, and trust them to do so. As a school board trustee, I promise that I will keep the students' needs first. I will always be transparent. I will always listen to my constituents, and although we might not always agree, I will do my best to find common ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nighting?
Yes, thank you. And I wanted to take the time to thank the moderators tonight and all those that have worked so hard to make this a successful event. My, mine is, politics can never be more important than the people we serve, our students. And I am committed to returning the focus to the needs of the kids, to the needs of the families and to the needs of our staff. I am committed to being fiscally responsible, putting an end to wasteful spending. We do not have the money to spend what we are spending on legal fees right now. We have to rein it in. And I am committed to come together and to work with whoever I need to, to make things happen. I, I do not think we have to fight. We do not have to fight amongst each other, but we have to come together and do what is right for our kids. And I would love to talk to you, any, any of you afterwards. I know we don't have much time, but I would love to hear what is on your mind and answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wagstaff?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you guys doing this tonight and for putting this on, for the community members for coming and for listening. And I encourage you, if there's a question that you did not get answered tonight, to please reach out. I am happy to talk with you individually. We'll meet, we'll have a coffee or a tea or a soft drink, and I would love to visit with you and get to know you because I care about this community. We've lived here for 10 years, and this is, this is home. And my kids are moving back here because this is home. And home, home is where my heart is. And I hope and pray that each one of you can feel that same way when we, when we go to the polls and we vote, that we vote with our conscience, that we put our kids first. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
So, I'm passionate, obviously, about the Lake schools because that's where I live and that's where my kids go. But I'm also passionate about the rest of Douglas County. As stated before, I've been a Pop Warner coach, not just down here, but up at the lake. I want to see all of our kids move from survive to thrive and not just stay in that mode. I want them to exceed it. I want kids to find the schools that best fit their needs, whether that's down here at the valley or up here in the lake or even from a variance from another county. Again, I just want all of our kids to succeed. I want all of our, our administrators to feel that they understand that we base education, and we're going to put that first. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Engelkirk?
Four years ago, there wasn't, there was an open seat at the lake, and I was just down with my wife at the recorder's office, heard about it, and I just felt the Lord telling me, you should run. And I didn't know anything about it, and boy, what a trip it's been. And I don't feel released from that, so that's why I'm running again, because I feel there's stuff that he wants me to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of Mr. Settlemeyer and I, we want to thank you for your willingness to serve on this board. Being a public servant, nobody knows better than you, takes courage, commitment and time. I want to thank you and the audience for conducting yourselves in a very professional manner and adhering to the rules. We thank you for your time this evening. We hope that you stay and visit with the community after the debate. At this point, I'd like to ask Ms. Louis.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With that, we want to thank everybody for being such a great audience. They've all agreed basically to come out in the audience and kind of socialize for a bit. We're going to take a break here in a second in order to reconfigure the stage and move on. But with that, maybe they'll even step out in the audience and do something that all politicians are supposed to tell you, which is their URL, their webpage, so you can go learn more information about them, but you know, we'll give them a break. But with that, let's give them a round of applause.